Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 19th meeting of the North Please call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Please stand with me for the plaid events. Plaid events to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anyone here to make public comment tonight? Not the public comment, we'll move on to item three, the governmental reports. Is there anything? Okay, so we're gonna head right into licensing. I have a motion in fact, if it was in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are now in licensing. You have to give me a second to put the papers together. Sorry, dropped them on the way in again. Remember what we had to put. Okay, this is a renewal application for Joshua Gaines, if I hope I'm pronouncing that correct, of Psychic Readings 163 Turnpike Street. Is Mr. Gaines here tonight? No. So this is just a renewal. They've been doing this at that location for quite some time now. It seems like they just came in a little while ago.
Well, I've had a change of ownership recently.
Okay.
And it was another woman that even ended, I think Joshua took it over, as I recall, maybe last year. But it's been an ongoing concern, not a concern, I mean an ongoing business at that location for a while.
So, any comment or questions from the board? I don't know where we would get the answer to it, but I'm glad, Rita. We have a motion and a second and further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is an application from the 99 Restaurants of Boston. Of course, it's on Chico Ring Road for change officer, officers, directors and managers. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
This is a lot too. Do you go within their license involved? It is sort of attributed to the manager. Is this at all related to their liquor license? Or is this just a change of management?
Just the change of management. And Lori had just said that they're just making this change statewide right now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we received a letter from the state.
Okay.
So they expedite, instead of them doing all these individual applications, they expedite it all as one. So all the 99s in the state are gonna be doing the same thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody here?
Madam Chair, I will once again move approval.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
And seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And so I will now entertain a motion to move out of licensing.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we move out of licensing.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we are now out of licensing. Madam Chair.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our new business. Item A is our Stevens Pond fees. And I'm going to turn it over to our deputy town manager, Alyssa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rick Gorman sends his regrets. He had an event at Merrimack College. He was speaking tonight and he committed in September. So he apologizes for that. So I get to bring to you the Stevens Pond, affectionately known as Stevie's Pond, the report for this coming year for the fee schedule. We're hoping for a full nine weeks in 2023. And just to refresh memories, the pond is staffed by a director, a lead lifeguard, eight lifeguards and several parking lot attendants. This year, the director will earn 23 an hour, the lead lifeguard 20, the lifeguard's 19, and the attendants will be paid $14 an hour. You will note that the mass minimum wage law is 15, but municipalities are exempt. We are making efforts, and you'll see through the five-year plan, to get close to minimum wage. We really do need so to be competitive, to attract the younger people to work at the pond. Some updates. DPW will continue to help with services in terms of preparing, opening season with pond setup, weed removal, sweeping the parking lot, raking sand, cutting grass, and doing trash. Permits will go online, as they have in the past. As always, youth and rec will work with people who don't have accessibility online. And they also will continue accommodations for residents with financial hardships. Hours of operations will be Tuesday, June 20th through Friday, August 18th, hours 9:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. And they are planning a cleanup day for this May. So in your package, you will see the fee recommendations for this year. So we are still implementing that five-year plan. And for fiscal '24, we're recommending that the seasonal rate go up $2 to $81. Lessons go up $3 to $58. Daily adult stays the same. The season nonprofit stays the same. Season for profit goes up $6 to $269. The senior pass stays the same. And the second car rate is $20.
So Dee, I think that might be the calendar year '24. I think the way Rick does this is a little confusing.
Oh, sorry.
So you want, although I would love to go up $4.
I know.
I think you want to use the 2023 line.
Oh, okay.
Because he does it by season.
Ah, okay.
He is not in sync with our fiscal year.
Okay, so I'm thinking fiscal year, okay.
Another year is another year.
He runs it through a seasonal year, yeah.
Okay. So I will back up.
Scratch that, say that again.
Scratch, scratch and reverse that. Okay, so working off of the correct column, the seasonal, we'd be going up $2 from 77 to 79. The lessons will be going up again $2 from 53 to 55. The daily adult pass will go up $1 to 14. The nonprofit will stay the same at 175. The season for profit is going up to 263 from 256. And the senior pass, again, is going to stay the same. And the second car will be $20. So again, modest increases. We want to make sure that we are not, you know, going up too quickly each year with the goal to eventually possibly get the Stevens Pond self-sustaining financially.
So last year was the first year that we implemented any rate hikes for a very long time. Did we see any drop-off in people? Do we know if we saw any drop-off in like number of swim lessons or number of seasonal passes?
No, it continued to be strong. Yep. And I think last year, we got eight out of nine weeks.
Yeah, it was a good.
It was a good summer. Rick was very happy. We were hoping for nine for nine, but we didn't get there.
But that has a lot to do with the spray, right? That keeps the algae away.
Yeah, the algae machine, I don't know, I can't think what it's called, but it's an acelerator, basically like a wand inside the water, has made a big difference. We still have, still have geese.
What happened to Gibbs? Is he gonna show up?
Yeah, I mean.
Gibbs has been helping out.
He has been helping out, but you really need like a constant dog and the ear raider. The ear raider to keep it moving in order for it to beep best. But it's been a huge improvement. It really has, so.
Plus, it's fun to watch.
Yes, yeah. And it's interesting, I mean, I've talked to Mike Smolik and he has similar issues with the geese right now. I think there's just a lot of them.
Yeah, golf courses are the same.
Yeah.
We're a surrounding town field. It's a town everywhere.
Can I ask you quite a bit on the expenses? They seem to fluctuate wildly from year to year. Is that based on solely the number of weeks we end up getting in a given year? Or is it?
That's correct.
Okay.
A couple of years ago, I think we closed two weeks early, you know, due to the high E COLI rating, readings that we got from the water samples. So, yeah, that has a big impact on the revenue.
I think that was 2012, right? That was the year we had to pretty much shut it down for most of the year.
There was another.
And then 2020, we were open longer because of the pandemic, was it? Got it.
Thank you.
I have to be honest, I know it's, the numbers probably say what they say, but I feel so strongly that every child should learn how to swim. And if you have several children in your family and you sign them up for more than one session and, and kind of the club fee of joining Stevie's Pond and the second car, and it's a lot of money for a sizable family who might be really feeling the pressure of this economy. And I feel so strongly that it used to be this was free. It was all part of the town. They paid for it. We all went for free. That was a long, long time ago. If you look at me, you can tell that was a long time ago. So, because I was one of the kids that took advantage of learning how to swim there. But I just think for what we gain not having someone have their staycation because they can't afford a vacation and learning how to swim just outweighs. I think the town, we should be able to squeeze that into the budget. So I will be a no vote on raising the fees, at least on some of them.
So I appreciate that. I mean, swimming lessons save lives, but I just think over, it's a very nominal fee increase. And what I always come back to is that we work to, any family that needs assistance can reach out and the assistance is there for them. I'm not, last time Rick was here, we asked him if he's ever had to like turn anybody away. And he, they've never done that. And so, you know, that to me, and I think one of the things that might be slightly different from when you took swimming lessons at the pond, is that there, a lot of kids have a lot of other options for swimming lessons that didn't really exist, you know, over the last few years. The Y also offers, you know, the swimming lessons, same thing. They are fee-based, but there's always assistance if somebody can't afford the fee. So I, I, you know, most of me feels as though every kid should be able to get free swimming lessons at any time, but the reality is we have to be able to run the pond. And because we don't turn anybody away, I think it makes me feel comfortable with a very nominal.
Except there's a lot of people who will not present themselves as being somebody in need. And, which is a tough decision, I think, for a mom and a dad to say, I'm sorry, we can't afford your lessons this year. Or, but that's my opinion, so.
Do we have the ability to offer group rates? Do we do that for families?
Offer what?
Group rates, right? So if you have multiple kids, is there a discount for the second kid? Or, I know a lot of places offer that, I don't know.
I don't think in this pay structure there is.
No.
I don't think we've ever had that, but it's an interesting idea.
Okay.
One of the other things that we floated last year, but, you know, we adopted this five-year plan, so. But one of the things I floated last year was almost having like two levels of membership, right? Like if you pay, if you're willing to pay more, you get a free sand bucket for your, you know, the kind of thing. So there's no obligation, there's no, but, you know, I think that will, down the road, there might be opportunities to change things up a little bit.
But $55 for swim lessons is every day for two weeks, correct?
For four weeks, right? It's every day for four.
But the two sessions.
It's every day for four weeks. And there's two sessions.
Every day for four, so the $55.
It's Monday, Thursday for four weeks.
So four weeks is 110.
No.
No, no, the two sessions. One session is.
Eight weeks is 110.
Oh, okay. So you get four weeks, four days, so 16 lessons for $55.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just trying to compare it to the Y pricing right now, which is.
He did do an analysis last year, and I was just looking to see if I could find it. So what, basically, just for historical information, two years ago, every year, Rick comes forward with Stevens Pond rate, rates proposed. And for a very long period of time, there was no movement on the rates. And the delta between what we were raising in revenue and what we were expending was becoming bigger and bigger. But there hadn't been any commitment to insert it in the budget because it's basically user fee, right? People who go are the ones who pay for it, or who pay for the majority of it. And so two years ago, we brought forward the idea of bringing, of having a five-year plan with 2.5% increases so that it would basically mimic Proposition 2 and 1/2 and the budget increases. There are two four-week lessons, two four-week sessions, sessions of lessons each summer. That's a really hard sentence. I feel like I'm reading like a Dr. Seuss book. There are two four-week sessions of lessons each summer. Lessons are held Monday through Thursday with morning and afternoon options. You have to be four.
I just think it's very reasonable compared to the Y and Cedar Dale and everything that's out there. And I think it would be really hard if we offered free lessons. How do you, it would have to be like some lottery system or?
We'd have to do a lottery, because there's only, we only offer 110 of them, yeah.
Yeah, there's only so many teachers and there's so many, yeah.
But I wasn't proposing that we offer free lessons to everybody. It was just keeping the price the same. It's just says a message that yes, we would launch our children to learn to swim and we consider it a high priority. Actually, my kids, I ended up with two lifeguards from the lessons that they started at Stevie's Pond. You know, two of my three boys ended up as not lifeguards for Stevie's Pond, but that's, you really learn to swim when you're taking lessons every day for four days. It's amazing how much the kids improve.
I mean, I just think the reasonable, very reasonable rate for those lessons too also says that it's important to us that the kids get to learn how to swim.
It, I don't disagree that it's reasonable. I just, my concern is that, you know, we should hold the line as so many families are and it's only a few dollars. And it sends a message, you know, take advantage of what we have. That's my opinion. If you're fine with the price, even during hard times, that's, that's okay.
I think it would be okay to ask Rick to sort of promote again that we can accommodate you if you have it. Like, I don't know how much we publicize that, right? Like, but I think it might be nice to make.
I think they try it into the meals or something like that, at school meals.
We did it as in principle last year. And I think Rick is, you know, kind of figuring his budget around that.
Yeah.
And also, you know, I think it's also important that we are competitive in what we can pay the staff that works there. So, you know, we're paying less for the parking lot attendants, which are a vital part of the crew. We're paying less than what McDonald's is paying, right? So, you know, although they get to sit out in the sun all day long, which is not a bad job. But, but still, you know, we have to be competitive to get the staff in there. And right now, we can't be because we're still running at a deficit.
With recent inflation, are we projected to at least get to break even at some point?
No.
No. So we're hard to catch up.
Yes. And that's why typically, like with a water and sewer rate that is kind of on par with what your budget is, I always recommend going up the amount that your budget goes up annually and reviewing these annually. Because what will happen is you'll end up in a situation where you need to do a 20 or 30% increase. It happened with the ambulance rates right after I started. There had been no change for several years and then we had to make our bigger-than-usual increase in order to offset. But so with the 2.5% increases, it does not get us to a break-even point. It just gets us closer, it just closes the gap. And I was just looking to see if I could, I know I ran those numbers last year.
So costs aren't going down anytime soon.
No.
Costs are never gonna go down.
Nope.
But many years, we have operated it with the delta.
All, all.
Looks like forever, yeah.
All the years. But again, it's a town, it's a town service.
Will you remind me where the delta comes from? Sorry.
Where the delta comes from?
Yeah, like where the, the negative comes, like where does that money come from?
So Rick pays it out of the budget, out of his budget.
So it's a youth and rec expense. Coming from one way or another, right? It means we're doing something differently with our other programs.
I wish I could find that.
I will. Any other commentary? And if not, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the rates proposed by, by the Youth Recreation Director for 2023 Stevens Pond rates.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second and further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
All those oppose?
The reasons I stated, the owners are tightening their belts. This is important, but that's just, I feel pretty strongly about it. But I have in the past, I think I've voted that way, except for last year. I gave it the raise.
Okay, so moving on to item B, a discussion regarding the recycling pickup. So, would you ask that you update us?
Absolutely. So as you may or may not know, Thompson Brothers, who does our recycling pickup, has recently, is it a merger? They recently merged, I believe, okay, with Star Waste Services. And they have been chatting with us over the last couple of months about their need to upgrade and update their trucks. And as you know, if you've driven through any communities near ours, it's very difficult now to get trucks that don't have the automatic loaders, either in the rear or in the side. And Star Waste's plan is to replace all of their trucks with the automatic side loaders. Part of that plan would be for us to implement these trash cans that I've asked them to bring with us today. And also the town meeting, so people will know that they're not too scary. They would be gifting those to residents and they would continue to own them. They would not be ours, they would not be the town's. So they would drop them off at every residence. The original plan that they had brought forward to start this in July, but I think we're probably a little bit later than that now, based on the timing of the conversations. They have committed that if there is people who are perhaps handicapped and cannot maneuver or manage those barrels, they would work with them individually. And the town is, on the administration end, is in favor of bringing these larger trash cans because we do think it would be a cleaner trash look and will encourage people to recycle. The one thing that we wanted to discuss with you is that Star Waste has proposed to go back to doing bi-weekly pickup, which is how I guess it was done in the past. But in recent years, it's been a weekly pickup. So they are here, if you'd like to hear from them as well. As you know, they do our recycling pickup at no cost as part of our coast community agreement, and that would continue.
This is just recycling, not trash?
It's just recycling.
So it's unrelated.
Unrelated to trash.
Let's just be clear.
No one needs to worry about their trash.
And someone whose trash did not get picked up today.
Don't worry about your trash.
It is unrelated.
All your trash cans, it's nothing to do with trash, just recycling. You are one of the 47 people that emailed me this week about their trash. That's okay, this is recycling.
Okay, so you guys can come, come on up.
It'll be still, still single stream, right?
Yes, yes. We get, for example, the two different size carts.
How do you decide who gets what?
Can we just have them introduce themselves, just so we have it for the record?
Yes.
Jillian will get mad at us, we don't want that.
Let us know who you are and.
Patrick Spreduto, the CEO of Star Waste Systems.
Jeff Thompson, Thompson Brothers.
Um, okay.
So who gets, how do you decide who gets what?
Well, the majority of the time, we'll be looking at the blue, the larger. But if there were seniors or somebody that needed a smaller tote.
We're gonna offer both sizes to accommodate everybody.
Is that getting on camera pretty well? That is, okay, great. I was gonna say, we need to move them, we will.
Recycle can, recycle can.
Look at that, and I think that's a great idea, but I don't know where I'm going to put that big trash.
So take the small one.
Well, but I will fill the big one, that's why.
Especially if it's bi-weekly.
Yeah, if it's bi-weekly, so.
You know, if that was an apartment, it would get about $1,500 a month. I couldn't, I couldn't help it. It's huge.
So people will have the.
Maybe we leave those here at Town Hall? If you don't mind, I could put them in the lobby, so if people wanted to come by, before I wheel them to town meeting, throw my books in them, the chairs in my suitcase. We can leave them in the lobby, so if people want to come by and see them, they can.
Have you done this in other, have you gone bi-weekly in other communities of similar size?
Yes, a lot of communities are bi-weekly. Yeah, when you provide the larger 96-gallon cart. And the benefit of that is you don't have a diesel truck going through your town burning emissions off at two and a half miles per gallon.
Fewer trucks.
Fewer trucks, fewer emissions.
And the nice thing about having the covers too, is you won't get trash blowing all over the place. And those won't tip over quite as easy as other people's means of deposit of their, frankly, recycling and trash, but.
It's a much cleaner look for the community as well.
Is there, okay.
Do we get to pick colors?
A way for somebody who, one week into the two-week cycle, has a barrel full of recycling, is there some provision that can help people who run into that problem? Like, or, like, where are they gonna put another whole week's worth of?
The week after Christmas. Like, think of every piece of cardboard you're gonna get, right?
Yeah, so the week after Christmas, I'm sure we could find an extra truck and go on service. Everybody, that's pretty easy.
I don't think it will be a huge issue, but I do think, especially people who feel like they can only have the small container, I just, I would like to know that there's some, a number they could call or something they could do to get a pickup.
Yeah, if they have some larger boxes, they put it outside next to the, next to the cart, we'll take them.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not like, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna see cardboard off to the side and pick it up and leave.
And not take it.
The trucks that we use are automated front-load collection trucks, right-side drive. So the driver's right near the can in the front, so he can step out easily, takes it on the throne and the.
So this picks up the front and kind of puts it over the top of the cabs?
It does, yeah.
So is it only the truck line manned by one?
One person.
Uh, that's nice for you guys.
Yes, can always bring extra material to the whole road location.
That's.
Yeah, we always have containers there.
That's a good solution.
And how long would the bi-weekly work, will it be like the whole town will be serviced bi-weekly? Or you're gonna do a portion of the town one week, portion of the other?
Yeah, instead of the town being broken up into five separate routes, the town would be broken up into 10 routes. Five, five routes, one week, five routes the next week.
Okay.
I think also too, just the viability of not having our workers behind the trucks and scooting out when they're moving and not realizing somebody's not paying attention.
In our industry, it is one of the, for workman's comp, the stepping on and off of the, a lot of knees, ankles.
Well, they're industrial athletes too, let's be honest.
Yeah.
I mean, they're lifting all the time.
It's, it's the sixth most dangerous industry in the country.
Yeah.
And typically, it's the helper in the back of the truck that's getting killed. That's where the fatalities are happening.
And injured just from lifting. I mean, I just am still in shock at how big it is. You have to have the gut, the thing with the arms lift in that, but.
I mean, I've got one that's not quite as big as that, and we're filling it every week. So the bi, the bi-weekly does concern me a little bit with that, especially with how much we're promoting more and more recycling in town. So it does me a little bit concerned. But I think you addressed it, you know, if you got the cardboard stuff that you stack up kind of next to it.
Put it on the side. And if there's, you know, so, so we utilize a proprietary software. So we're gonna have the entire town routed and, and every address will have like an account and we'll know what container's there. So if someone has extra material every week, we have cameras on the truck. It'll take a picture or notify us, it'll tell us, hey, this address is, every week has got extra, you know, material. We could put a second cart there. Easy.
That was my question. Could people request a second car or like?
Yeah, if there's people out there that need second carts, we're gonna order a few extra carts for everybody. The goal is to help you with your recycling percentage, so we're gonna accommodate everybody.
Would that make a difference that Main Street, we do pick up trash on Main Street, even if it's a business?
Some of the businesses are grandfathered, yes.
Yeah, I'm just, the sheer size of those, I'm just wondering. You would have to have them like first thing in the morning or something before the store is open.
They serve some Main Street now, right?
Yeah.
You know, because it will cut into parking and it just, yeah.
We'd have to get Main Street done first.
Yeah, which, which would be easy. I mean, I think it already is done first or something, isn't it? Is it, Jeff, do you know?
Yeah, they do.
They'll put the town seal on each of the, on the trash cans, so we'll get that. They'll put the town seal on each of the, on the trash cans, so we'll get that over to them as soon as we have all the.
Can we pick red for the town colors, red and black?
We did, we did talk about re, having a red trash can. We had some, there was some back and forth about whether or not red was a good idea.
Our company colors are red, so we don't mind red?
So we could do red.
I think we should, blue would be blasphemy, because that's our neighbor to the south.
We, we had talked about green being like a recycling color.
Like a recycling color.
Because event, if eventually we do go to a trash can that's of the same, which I think you will eventually see, we're seeing it in Danvers where we live now, I think eventually you will see that as well.
And we'll need a different color.
You had need a different color.
Yeah, maybe the trash can becomes red.
Yeah.
That makes sense to do the recycling.
I mean, green and then the trash eventually red, that was where I was coming from.
And it's all set for Christmas.
We'd be all ready, we wouldn't even need Christmas lights anymore.
We'd also love to do the trash.
What your trash cans are.
So with the mechanics of the truck itself, does it need to be like the barrel to be loaded in a certain way? I'm thinking of my fourteen-year-old, and if I have to teach him actually how he has to leave it out at the end of the driveway?
Yeah, it's literally pushed out with the front of the cart facing the street, so it opens up towards the street and dumps in and gets put back down.
Okay.
We're going to send out like a, a communication to everybody, do like a mailer.
So slight learning curve, right? So if he's not paying attention, he leaves it backwards, you guys got to get out of the truck.
It'll still, it'll still work.
But you know, a video that goes on our cable would be great too.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have a video, we have a mailer, we're going to do some social media advertising as well.
Lot of education about the truck, we don't want anyone to be surprised when they get their new recycling can.
I do, again, I'm looking at the size of that, and it does concern me. I live in a small house, a lot of houses near me are small, but the small one's not going to be big enough. And so, I don't know, I mean, it is what it is, but I think there's going to be a lot of things to work through that are going to be a problem, like.
Will the pickup only work with that particular cart?
Yeah, so it's a, the, the way the arm is, you can put two different sizes on it, it's either thirty-two gallon and sixty-four, or sixty-four and ninety-six.
I rule these out never for trashing and recycling, it's pretty dense, I mean, people have them in their apartments, but we did make it work.
Yeah.
We had a lot of people who lived in a smaller housing area to choose the smaller one.
Yeah.
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 I think you're one of the last communities in the state not to have any type of cart.
Yeah.
Want to make sure it works everywhere else.
To make it sure we get that technology nailed before we.
It's definitely been perfected, and as I was telling the town manager, the real load trucks, they're, they're just not manufacturing them any longer, because they're selling the automated trucks at a higher price.
New trucks is not a bad thing, right?
Well, it's a liability too for the business, if they're not buying the ones that are more safe, then it's kind of a bad thing.
Will you take back my old barrel?
Right, what are we doing with all the stuff that we're currently using?
It's impossible to throw it away.
Even with holes in the bottom.
I got a blue, one big blue one from.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get.
You have to put a sign on it that says, please throw it away.
Yes, I have done that.
It's a project, we're going to make sure everyone gets service and accommodate everybody.
But if you're up for it.
It's exciting, it sounds great, it sounds like, you know, I guess, all, all the concern is over the, every other week and having that thing filled, but I guess we'll have to deal with it.
I guess we'll have to see how it go, I mean, is there any option to do it on a trial basis for six months and see how?
Well, listen, if it doesn't work for the town, we're, we're, yeah, we're going to come back and fix it, yeah, that's.
That's, that makes, yeah, a lot of sense, right?
But they're paying for the house, and they're not cheap.
No, I, I think, I don't mean that we go away from the barrels, I'm thinking more like back to every week versus every other week.
Yeah, if it's failing, we're not able to provide service, we're going to come back and fix it.
That's.
Absolutely.
How long ago was it we did every other week in town, it wasn't that long ago, right? It was maybe ten years?
It would have been two thousand and, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight?
Yeah.
I think we were still every other week.
But I guess we're promoting recycling a lot more.
And it wasn't single stream probably then.
No, it wasn't, it was, you had to separate.
So it's just a different scenario.
It sounds great doing it every week, but you don't generate more recycling because it's getting picked up every week.
Right.
So the fact that we have the capacity to get it done in a half a week, be more efficient, stop burning the fuel in the town, I think, I think makes a lot more sense. And we use our software to log all the complaints and all the issues, and we'll, we'll make sure that.
It's music to our ears, right?
But it's not just that, it's when, having sizable barrels like that out on the street every week, it does, it affects plowing, street sweepers, it's, there's a lot, so maybe every other week is, is better in more ways than one.
Sure.
Parking, you know, so.
Any other questions?
Well, you said, I did, yeah, you said that this is no cost to the town? So who, where does that money come from? Oh, you guys.
From them.
You mean the barrels or no?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's a significant investment, the.
Well, the cost, there is no cost.
There's no cost for recycling.
Part of our development agreement with the TBI.
Yes, we don't pay for any recycling.
Yeah, I think, I, I want to say.
I asked for that, by the way.
The cart alone, the carts alone are roughly like six hundred thousand dollars. The new automated frontload truck is almost five hundred thousand dollars, and then you need a spare frontload truck to make sure that if that truck goes down, you're continuing service. So it's, it's, it's pretty close to like a million five, million six in, in an investment.
And then you get savings on, only have to do it half as much, right? Run up on the truck.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting the efficiency, we're getting the guys off the back of the truck, and we're getting the fact we're going to do it every week and the safety.
Not to circle back to colors, but could we do red and black for trash and recycling?
I'm going to, my thought here is people will, it's easy to know that green is for recycling.
That was my first thought, with the red and black. But the black will look dirty or quicker.
Either could be either.
You know, it's going to look dirty, but I think the green is for recycling, and then when we go to trash, it should be the red. But I, I was on the same.
I know. We had a lot of chatter about those. But I just think.
You'll ask a woman, and then she'll take it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, we're, we're open to whatever colors you want to get, we'd love to order them by the end of the week, that's kind of our game plan.
You can continue that discussion, not.
I think, yeah, I mean, that's why we, we thought the green, just because green's recycling, red's trash.
I feel like, especially my children, would be like, well, I don't know, is it the red one or is it the black one? Which one's?
Well, one will say, one should say recycling, I don't know what you're going to call the other one, you don't want trash on your barrel.
What would the standardization fall to one color? You don't have to have anything on it, you know the green one is the recycling, you don't have to have stickers on them anymore. You just know green recycling.
Right.
Perfect, all right, other questions?
Where are you guys based, are you Massachusetts company?
Massachusetts, Boston pretty much.
Okay.
Is this, does this require a vote, or is this just informational?
Just informational, thank you for coming. Just wanted to share.
Any other questions before we let them?
Nope, I'll also, if you want the additional four of May at the, at the town meeting.
Thank you.
I could run some more over.
That'd be great, thank you.
Really good idea.
How many different entrances?
You probably can just do one right in front of the auditorium, I'll send you an email, we can, can, I mean, I don't mind just bringing those ones with me, but.
I'll run, I'll run you some more over, you don't have to bring these ones around.
Throw the seats down, it'll be fine.
I'm assuming you're going to leave these down?
I'm going to bring those down to the lobby right now, yeah.
Or if you want down, you want to take it.
I can wheel them over to the senior center one day this week too, so they can see it.
That's a great idea.
Or if you want some additional ones brought to the senior center and you want to leave these ones here, just give me a call.
We'll take them on a little tour.
I've got some more at the office, I can run them over.
They should take a lot of pictures of their tour.
Yep, so, yes, so, no, it's good, it's good, because people are afraid of them, they don't know they change, and so when you actually get your hands on it and see it's not as heavy as you think it's going to be, it helps.
And they're not flimsy, I mean, it's not just the, they're big, but they're, they're not flimsy as some of the barrels that you buy in the store, they, you know, they crack really easy if you don't buy a good one.
Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item C, which is a vote to extend the Four Hundred Grape Pond Road Committee of Recommendation until June twenty twenty-four. So I will hand it over just like my ballot board.
Yes, so as we know, we voted a couple meetings ago to spend some opera money to do a study on, by some professional architects and professionals in conservation to see how we can, what suggestions they have for how we can best utilize the property. So we're in the process of writing an RF, RFQ, request for qualifications, and that will be going out within the next couple of weeks. But the, the current committee is scheduled to disband in June of twenty twenty-three, but the report won't be back until at least next year about, you know, we planned to try to get something for town meeting. So we'd like to request that the board, or this committee be extended for, until June of twenty twenty-four. And this board has the authority to do that.
What's the point of stuff?
It is, absolutely.
Great, thank you for that explanation.
And the committee really has worked hard, there's, we're doing a couple meetings per month. We, we've kind of laxed them now because we've gotten to a point where we don't have to meet every other week anymore. But during December, January, February, March, we did meet every other week, so.
It was a lot of work.
Yeah, and I think there's some, still work to do.
So the committee will continue to meet, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we'll get you to meet.
Well, as I said to you, you were on a blue ribbon committee. You're running a blue ribbon committee too, it's a fine, fine group of professionals that really care, so.
Thank you.
All right, I will take a motion.
I'll move that the select board extend the deadline to the Four Hundred Grape Pond Road Committee Recommendation until June first twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Uh, we're going to move on to, we don't have any consent items, so we'll move on to approval of minutes, the open session minutes of April tenth twenty twenty-three. Did everybody have a chance to review them?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. We're moving on to old business, item A is town meeting warrant article recommendations for CPC item six, eight, nine, and ten. So we can head back over to town manager of our VGS, because we have a couple updates.
So we're, tonight we're going to just be considering the CPC article, the only item that we will not have reported on by the time we get to town meeting, unless we decide not to get to tonight, will be Article Ten, the land taking, because we're just waiting for the appraisal and the survey to come back. Obviously, don't want you to take a position on that until we have all of the information. So the first item to discuss tonight is the Stevens Coolidge Ballroom mural for fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. Since our last meeting, Rick Gorman has gotten some additional information from the Stevens Coolidge. So just to kind of tell you a little bit about that, for the go passes, if you remember correctly, we had one go pass to the library that admitted two adults and their children. He said that they will now expand that to six go passes at the library. The community days will go from being one per year to one per month for March through October. And winter lights will not be a field trip for the entire school system, it will be a collaboration between the youth center and the schools to provide one to two nights for kids that have limited means to attend. Thank you.
I know it was a lot.
Oh, and we did have a public, I apologize, we did have a public comment come in immediately before the meeting. Yeah, we will attach that to the record.
I know it was a lot of work for, to go back to them and negotiate a better.
But the letter, the letter kind of summed up a lot of people's sentiment that we received today.
Excepted, yes, I agree, but it also is not necessarily, things have changed since that letter, and that's the.
But.
And if I, if I could, I'd like to specifically recognize Terry Holland for the work he did on CPC and bringing those folks together to, to make this happen, to get what we got.
Yes, he's a good guy.
Well, I think certainly increasing the number of passes from one to six is significant, and one additional, you know, a day per month, that's certainly, as opposed to one per year, that's, that's a significant increase as well.
We sold the other stuff from the schools that we discussed last time, that's all still part of it, yeah.
And it's all stuff they do.
Do, most, okay.
So the diff, the new stuff.
None of that went away, this is all just the new stuff that we're, got it, yep, great.
So. Comments?
I just, no, it's a step in the right direction.
I agree. So should we, we should take one at a time, probably.
I would, because I feel you'd lose all the rest of them.
Yeah, I think so, so that's Article Six, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I, I move that we recommend favorable action on the Stevens Coolidge Ballroom, Ballroom mural in the amount of fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars with the attached stipulations.
I have a motion.
A second.
And a second, any further discussion?
Other than, it's a better deal now.
Mm-hmm.
To be using town funds for that, but it's a, it is a better deal, taking into account what the letter said, I, I think it, it's a, it's a pretty good trade.
And at the end of the day, it is part of our history, right, that mural?
Oh, absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item that we have not yet taken action on, there's so many things open, is number eight, and that is the preservation of the historical records. I think we had not taken action at that point, because we were still waiting on the historical commission to rule that they were historical, and that has not been completed.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I'll move, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, that's.
I may move favorable action on community preservation funding from number eight, preservation of historical records.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is number nine, which is two hundred and five thousand dollars for the preservation of the barn at four nineteen Johnson Street. Fincom will be making a recommendation on this one at town meeting. Unfortunately, the way that they voted, it came out as a no action, and they are not able to vote no action on a financial article at town meeting, so they need to revote, they had a tie. And they had a tie on a negative motion, so it came out, yeah. Because they're very minuscule nerdy, and we excited, a great debate about it, it was very exciting for me, and no one else, I think, except maybe town council also enjoyed it. But they will not be taking action to that one until town meeting.
Has anything changed with the barn as far as requiring a historical restriction on it?
So we absolutely would require a deed restriction before we would release the money, a historical deed, historical preservation deed restriction. Again, it's like a Dr. Seuss, like, what's going on tonight?
You need, you need, and that was a condition of the CPC approval too.
That would be a condition, yes. Um, as far as whether or not there would be any public access, I have seen no new information about that.
Okay. Other discussion?
I guess I would ask the board how we feel about something where we don't necessarily have public access to. I don't know, that's, it just doesn't sit right with me.
I know, I wish we had, had, the plan was fleshed out more, right? But we'll have the opportunity to negotiate that before.
I mean, we could, we could sit down and negotiate public access as part of the requirements if we so chose, but we would need to save that somewhere.
But it's going to be used for storing equipment, right? So why would the public want?
Potentially, that's I think what they're anticipating right now, that's, that's the best guess I think CPC got in terms of, you know, what they're intending to do. I, I mean, I guess I would take a slightly different approach on it, saying that the, the preservation of the barn for the preservation's sake is really what CPC was thinking when they approved this particular project, in, in, in that we do have limited dairy barns left throughout town. This one is in structural issues with the roof and with, you know, some of the shoring, which is why the initial request was cut down to two hundred and five thousand dollars. You know, not dissimilar from these, you know, the Stevens Stables is, let's get it solid, get it safe, so it's not subject to being demolished, and then kind of figure it out after the fact. So that's, that was the approach that, that CPC was taking when they approved this particular one.
So it's like, okay, we store the barn, preserve it, and then have a use for it, right? And that's.
Well, right, you, you want to take this first step to make sure that the barn's still there to figure out a use down the road. I just don't know if we're going to get a satisfactory answer prior to town meeting as to what that use will ultimately end up being. And if it is storage, it's tough to, not impossible, but it's, it is a little bit difficult to figure out what public access is according, if, if it's storage for equipment.
Especially meaningful public access.
Yeah.
Correct, correct.
Do we know when that barn was originally built, right?
Uh, I don't want to misspeak, so I don't off the top of my head, but I believe it was in the application. The historic commission did deem it historic.
Story, sure.
Yeah, yeah, as a requirement, so.
So the two hundred and five thousand, make sure we, make sure we don't lose it, it does not renovate it.
Correct, correct.
And sometimes just the aesthetics, even from the outside and the history, aren't interesting enough. I mean, we've, we in this town have lost several really wonderful buildings, because they fell into disrepair, Johnson High, the Odd Fellows Building. I would argue the Brad Street School was still a really nice piece of property, not. Not that the present owner hasn't done a nice job. I voted no on that, but he has done a nice job with what it was replaced with. But once it's gone, it's gone.
You know, and I think one, one thing to note is, you know, while the inside of the building may not be accessible even down the road, the property itself would be, it would be a part of Ridgewood property. There's no plan to close off access to the property. And Ridgewood, I think, when they acquired this as it was presented to us, is obviously for future expansion of the cemetery, but in the interim, they hope they don't need it for many decades. They would like to open the, the property up to access to the public. You know, be it fields or whatever else they think they can do with it. The barn was really ancillary to their purchase and is a good opportunity to present something, to, to protect something, have it be historic, have it be a part of the aesthetic of the neighborhood, still be accessible to the town in terms of being able to be viewed and the property be able to be walked. And then it, it helps, does help Ridgewood financially in that now they don't need to build a, you know, a new facility for their, for their equipment, so. So that was, again, as it was presented to us. So there is, I guess, maybe it gets back to Melissa's point of what is meaningful public access along with it? If that's your, if that's your biggest challenge, Laura.
So let's finish this.
I don't see a date that it was in the application, just as historic.
Okay.
Well, I guess the fact that the historic commission has deemed it historic is enough for me. I wasn't looking for an exact date, but I guess it's got to be over 100 years old anyway.
Must be at least 100 years.
So I think, you know, the fact that we should preserve it is, is enough for me to, to be in favor of this. I think we should, you know, try to keep it and keep it in a state that it's not going to fall down or, you know, be unpreservable at some point, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a, definitely a fair argument to keep it. We want to keep it, we want to keep the buildings that we can.
And I would suggest we keep the dialogue with Ridgewood open, you know, as to, hey, we're, as to what potential uses are going to be for the property and for the barn. And I think they've expressed nothing but a willingness to work with the town on that, so.
Okay, so I'll take a motion. It's Article nine.
Number nine.
Let's just.
Thank you. Yeah, which one?
Number nine.
Number nine, Article 19.
Yep. I will.
Uh, I'll, because, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 That was a favorable?
That was favorable action, yes.
Yes.
And then the next item is number 10, the restoration of the Bondurie Wall. The FinCom voted unfavorably on this item. This was $275,000 to the Ridgewood Cemetery for the restoration of their wall, the stone wall.
And which wall would that be? Is it the one that borders Salem Street?
It's, it's interior to the cemetery. It's in the southeast portion of the cemetery, kind of closer. There's a handful of lots between Marble Ridge and the cemetery property. This wall borders the two of those, not two of those, six or so of those, that area, yeah.
The other wall restorations that they did in there, was that also funded by CPC? I think it partially was.
Um.
They did have some money.
I'd have, I don't know.
And they did tremendous work in there. They really did a nice job.
And there was, there were nine phases of the historic master plan for Ridgewood overall. And many of those preceded me, so I'm not totally up to speed on them. But I believe that a portion, I think maybe, maybe on Salem Street was possibly, you know, CPC dollars, so.
And I'd like to say, even though I know Melissa said it and she can correct me, every town has to have a cemetery. And we've adopted that to be ours. So with that comes some responsibility of making it a nice cemetery in good shape and.
Very much that they, how much of funding have they received over like the last few years?
Uh, you know, I'm going to get the wrong, I didn't get the number wrong, but if you take out the second burial ground, you're funding that they've received, I believe it's approaching $2 million all time.
That's us, I think that's being greedy.
Yeah.
Right, but it, it needs to be done. If not, we're going to be buying land and starting our own if they, if we weren't allowed to work with them. So according to the law anyways.
Yeah, it's a good effort.
We really don't want to be encouraging people to move into the cemetery, that's for sure.
No, we don't.
I mean, the good news is with their acquisition of the new land, they'll have additional slots to sell and so they'll be bringing some of their own income in as well.
Correct. That's part of the, yeah, their, their revenue model isn't exactly the same as a lot of other businesses. You know, which makes it more challenging.
You don't want to be pushing those revenues out, that's for sure.
Right, right.
For the, the obvious reason.
Okay, any other discussion? I will take a motion.
I will move approval.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to, well, actually, can you come out and just, can you just let us know why you're here?
Um, business renewal?
For, okay.
Uh, for, hello?
Hi, how are you?
Um, for Conteller License Renewal?
It seemed like you came back off. That's why I said, can we find out?
For approve, you're all set.
I thought it was you.
I'm so sorry for being late.
But you're all set.
I'm not today, I'm so sorry.
Give you the good news in person, you're all set.
Thank you so much. Again, I can't apologize.
No, don't worry. Don't worry.
Well, you knew in advance we were going to say yes, right?
That's what happens about just. You should have known, we did it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you folks so much. You enjoy the rest of your night.
You, too.
Don't forget your coat.
No, you'll be back and the doors will be locked.
Okay, moving on to Town Managers' reports.
There's one exciting thing to report, which is that the North Andover Water Department has received the, an award from the DEP Drinking Water Program. So they, for 2023, they achieved one of the top scores in the medium and large community system category for the Public Water Systems Award Program, which is very exciting. Yeah, so on May 11.
They win awards every year.
I know. This is a good one, yes.